All right, we're gonna call the order. Notice is hereby given in accordance with General Law thirty-nine twenty-three A that a special meeting of the Lawrence Redevelopment Authority will be held on Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five at five P M. Meeting will be held at two fifty-five Essex Essex Street, first floor Lawrence, Mass. Oh, one eight four zero pursuant of Governor Baker's March twelfth, twenty-twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law thirty A, section eighteen, and the governor's March fifteenth, twenty-twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public meeting of the L R is also being conducted by a remote participation. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the hearing designated for public comment. Use the link below. Roll call.
Sarah Perez.
Present.
Ramon Casara.
Present.
Pedro Dejada.
Present.
Eric Walker.
Present.
All right, we're gonna start with the discussion and selection of the project manager. Do we have?
You know, Mr. Chairman, can we take this out of order because of the because it's gonna be a lengthy discussion?
Got it. Okay, can I get a motion to take this section out of order, please?
Motion to take section out of order.
And a second roll call.
Sarah Perez.
Aye.
Pedro Dejada.
Aye.
Ramon Casara.
Aye.
Bert Walker.
Aye. All right, we'll move on to the presentations. Andrew, what time did we tell the new years and?
I spoke to, I called all of them today, told them six o'clock because we had an agenda item at five.
Okay.
And then usually you guys break each six.
Yeah, yeah.
And I inform them so they didn't have to hang around between five and six.
No one was expecting to present until six.
That's correct.
Anybody ready to present?
No, then let's go with item, let's go with the first item then.
We're gonna, we're gonna un, we're gonna undo it.
Motion to bring item back to the order presented tonight.
She knows six o'clock. Oneida, Alberto, and Sia group, I spoke to all three.
All right, we have a motion to undo the undoing. Can I get a second? We have a second roll call.
Sarah Perez.
Aye.
Ramon Casara.
Aye.
Pedro Dejada.
Aye.
Eric Walker.
All right, thank you all. All right, the project manager portion. This first thing, okay. We have any of the other two folks come?
Two are here and one is Colliers and he told me that he's gonna be on via Zoom and I believe that's, that's in there, Joe Notton.
Okay, do we have an order?
Let's confirm first because of audio. Mari, so can you confirm that Collier Group is here? And who are they represented by?
Hi there, Joe Notton with Colliers Project Leaders.
Good afternoon.
How are you?
And from Red, Collaborative Red and from RAG, everybody's here.
Okay, Andrew, do we have an order in particular?
Um, no, I didn't tell them an order, I just said that there's gonna be discussions of the project manager.
Okay, I think you can pick an order or I should pick an order or?
Yes, you're gonna pick an order.
Well, if you don't mind, let's start with who's remote if that's feasible to our folks. Colliers, are you guys ready to go?
Yep, perfect.
Okay.
We're not prepared to do a presentation unless you'd like us to and we thought we were gonna be on the line to answer any questions they had.
Okay, okay. I think, Chairman, where the board is out with this is, there's a, could be a motion to select a project manager or a combination of project managers and then could be discussion and then a vote on, well, there's a second of the motion and a discussion and then to come to a vote and I think that's where we're at and if you wanna entertain question and answers of the prospective project managers, that's up to you, but I think that's where we're at. Ready for a motion?
Do you want me to read what I sent to them just for transparency, what I sent to each of?
Yes, it's on, it's on the record.
Sure. So to each party, Colliers Group, to Collaborative Red and to R A G Associates. I just greeted them, good morning and then their name. The L R A Board will be making their decision relative to the project manager position on two twenty-five twenty-five at five P M. There will be a Zoom link if you would like to join the meeting or you are welcome to attend in person. The board may have questions, so the board may have questions, so we are informing all parties regarding this matter. Thank you in advance.
So, L A A Board members, are we ready to make a decision, combination of decisions?
Through you, Chair, if I may, I believe, you know, we should, we should, now that we have him before us, ask him a few questions because we were concerned that one gentleman was present and the other two companies were not represented, so a great opportunity for us to, to get the answers to some of the questions we had and possibly it's gonna be a combination, in my opinion, of, of project managers because, you know, it's many projects that are gonna be available. I don't know if, you know, one person's able to handle all of it.
I mean, that's also valid, so do we have questions?
We do. And I'm gonna ask the same question to all of them.
Yep.
My first question is, the experience that the company have doing this type of projects from the beginning to the end and how do they deal with multiple vendors, multiple companies, how do you guys deal with it? Anybody can answer first, so for the three of you.
We can go ahead in order. The, the Collier Group, there you go ahead.
Sure, we, we view the, the project as a, as a collection of smaller projects that will unfold over time as, as your development plan rolls out and base, our firm is, is fairly large, we probably have a hundred project managers in New England doing a variety of different types of projects. We're doing multifamily projects, mixed use, we're doing schools, all kinds of different publicly and privately funded projects. So, from beginning to end, we probably have, I don't know, ten billion dollars worth of projects under some sort of development, whether it's design or construction and, you know, we, we're working in all six New England states right now doing, you know, some sort of development and it, you know, the way we flex to, to service a project really is client dependent and it's demand driven, so the faster, you know, the developments at your end of the, of the equation come to life, the, the quicker we'll spring into action and make sure we have suitable resources moving the projects through the process as expeditiously as possible. Multiple vendors, that's another great question or, or comment. We, we frequently with the same client will use, will develop multiple projects, sub-projects that'll have different teams for a couple of reasons, not the least which is develop a little bit of friendly competition among the different projects that we have going at one time. Right now, for example, the N B T A, we're working on a project, a couple of projects there where we've got separate teams set up to help manage each of the rollouts of those. Same client in a number of different projects on different timelines, but the, but the approach is that we flex to satisfy the needs of the clients as the specific projects that they're contemplating come online and it's, we have a very, very robust team that, that helps us with the staffing of the projects internally and also when we need resources, resources from outside the firm, they help us identify target resources that we can bring in as the projects require. So multiple vendors, again, we, we may have multiple designers on a certain program, again, to, to make sure that, that each project is getting its, its unique and specific needs met and then same with the contracting, we'll, we'll let the contracts to multiple general contractors to make sure that we, we haven't saturated any one of them and that the project is, each, each individual project is getting what it needs in terms of a resource flow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who wants to go next?
Yeah, great question, thank you. I think it's a decent sized project, but not, not overly large, but three A P M, the project managers at a junior level, I'll be on the project as well, so we have plenty of staff to cover what I believe this project will need. We've done three billion dollars of the projects, it's where the Colliers have done lots of stuff, so I don't think the size and scale of this can, can handle, we're very excited to handle. And as far as vendors, I mean, hundreds of vendors on, on almost every project we ever worked on, we, you know, all subs and subs of the subs, science, subcontractors, so, you know, it's all process driven, it's very, most of our time is spent kind of herding those cats, that's what, that's pretty much what we're paying us for in my mind. So, yeah, getting all those stakeholders, internal, external, on projects, related entities, organized, communicating well, that's, that's the bulk of what we do. So, not, not at all worried about that. We do have in the event that things do ramp up beyond what I currently believe to be the case, we do work off on the front gate at one of our bars, so they have similar, could be some hot people in-house if I ever needed additional resources, that's that company that's behind, we, we share resources on, on projects. So, in the event that something ever did become beyond what I believe that the risk of the product is needed, there's additional firepower there without having.
What's the name of the company again?
Redd.
Without no. We deal with a lot of different, I don't know, engineers, we deal with a lot of projects and, and we deal with cable, some though, we deal with subcontractors personally, I have four other project managers plus myself, I'm the main guy. My, my biggest thing is I try to make sure, all my eyes are dotted with these across with every project we do, by us doing our job, you guys don't have to worry about it. I'm a local person, I live ten minutes down the road, I talk to them twenty-four hours a day, ready issues or questions. We deal with, you know, diplomats, we deal with subcontractors, we deal with the inspectional services, we deal with multiple, just so everybody is on the same timeline and projects are met on the deadlines. Right now, we're about ninety-seven percent on our deadlines, which is above average. I feel that we've dealt with different types of, you know, technicians, plumbers, builders, foundations, we've dealt with so many different projects, from Marshall Fox, two companies from A T on, rehabs, vocal, we've got a lot of personal homes and people's homes. We, we've always been, my biggest thing is, I'm always, you know, fifteen minutes early, fifteen minutes late, I'm always the person there first, I'm always the person there last, I'm a very, you know, person like that, that's why I've been in business for twenty-seven years. I feel that I wouldn't be in business as long if I didn't stop them on, if I wasn't, my word wasn't my gun. I feel, you know, like I said, we've dealt with, we've done, that's, that's, that's.
So how many people are new team?
Mine, sixteen.
And how, how many projects, like he said, was like ten billion, he said three billion, like?
Ten.
Up to five million?
Five, all, all projects are, are slated for the wrong thing, we, it could be a five billion dollar project here or a ten billion dollar project here, it really depends. I know these streets, I grew up on these streets, these streets are my home. I remember Morris when, what it was, okay? I still believe Morris is one of the best places. People, I, people, ninety percent of my staff in my office, I mean, that are actually on the jobs themselves, they work on the construction part also, not in the office, they do on the sites, she's from, I don't know, South. We, we do multiple cultures.
Did we have, with the chair, can we acknowledge that Anna is on, is Anna, Anna's on, online?
Yeah.
She's on, she's on. She's on her way.
Okay.
Oh, she, she's, send me in fact, that, that, Anna, can you hear us?
You're muted.
Yes, I can and, Octavia, I'm trying to work here with my husband so I can make it there in about ten minutes, okay, hon?
Okay, all right.
Thank you, I'm so sorry, guys.
Oh, you're, you're on, this counts, so it's.
Thank you.
We have a question.
I have, I have a question specifically for Colliers. We have a site that's being looked at, Mermac Paper, that site in particular, as it's understood, there will be remediation work that will, that needs to be done there. What experience and I, excuse me if, if this question brings that portfolio to light, but what experience have you had specifically with projects of that type where remediation has been the focal point?
We, hundreds, we have a whole group that does environmental assessments and oversees remediations of a variety of different sites that maybe brownfields are warm or hot depending on, you know, what was, what existed on the site previously. I wish I had my planner on the, on the call here and she could give you literally dozens of examples where we've recreated sites from sites that had been, I guess you could say abandoned in the minds of, of many because they, it was something that, that happened there a hundred years ago, you know, all, all acceptable at the time, but over time regulations change and so the society decides that, that certain sites aren't, aren't suitable anymore for, for development. That in the urban locations, geez, it's hard to find a parcel that hasn't, hasn't been developed and utilized in some capacity, so I, I would say that I, we would use our environmental group, if, if you want, we would use our environmental group to take care of phase one site assessments if you haven't done those yet and then phase twos to determine what action is required to, to, to clean up the site or to preserve the, you know, the safety in and around the site as it's redeveloped, but we have a whole department that, that could help with that aspect of the job, if that's suitable to you, if not, we could certainly outsource that up as well to, to one of the local firms that, that also specializes in that, that type of work.
Excellent, excellent. Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask Collaborative Red the same question.
Thank you, yes, I mean, say, most of our work has always been urban development and so, like, like Joe said, urban projects almost always have, so we've done, you know, full-on gas stations that have leaky gas tanks that light, let, excuse, groundwater contamination and have to deal with radiation prior to and after monitoring, I mean, we obviously oversaw, do that work ourselves, like, others has some of it in-house, we manage the people to deal with that. I did the, first building in Candor's Crossing, so when they were switching over from the maintenance, M T A rail yard there, as well as water contamination that was there from the blocks that it's off underground, so tons of contamination on that particular project locally, we've done a bunch of, of track work, same kind of thing where they've done a bunch of car temples and the most, probably consumer building now that is a former coal ash dump for this, for the entire, so they all just, up their coal ash there and looking open hill that it, for reasons, yeah, that's.
And, and finally, Rags, have you had any experience in?
We've had, we've had, we've done, we've done, applied to relieve them. I'm a mediator, I charge also, I've been there for twenty-six years, so I understand numbers, I understand consistency of, of contamination, ground, groundwater, soil, soil testing, we've, we've done that, we've done a cleanup circle, we've done, we had to do the X B O building in Manchester that had old drums in, in the floors and stuff, prior to put them slap down, we had to have that all for a test, P A tested, make sure everything is perfect, we have all of that, like I said, I can read all those levels, so I've been, I've done that, so we just, we do bulk, bulk of that stuff, uh, different places. But, but, I did one there, I sell it over now, but I do it as much as, make sure everything is, you don't mess with it.
Thank you.
New things?
Ramos.
Andrew, you had another? I, I, I think that, I, I'm good with the questions, I just, it just makes sense to consider research, we've already discussed the budget and with being able to combine
Can you speak up, please?
These particular, as, as we have spoken earlier in the prior meeting and, and I agree with our initial assessment of the situation where we understand that there are sites that fall within the purview of, of, of one particular project manager, but we may need a certain level of expertise in another, so I would feel more comfortable combining these projects and allowing certain expertise to concentrate in a certain area where we had somebody keeping score directly with the smaller projects, at least that's the way I'm.
Right, because there's a number of projects that could be engaged, not all at the same time, yep.
Chair, through you, I also agree and that's been my mindset for the last few weeks as we discussed this, we're dealing with potentially seven hundred million dollars worth of projects here and I question some of the company's ability to keep up with the demand that's gonna be required to fulfill these projects, so I am also inclined to see how this is gonna be a collaboration, you know, in, in order for us to make this work or going with, with the, the company that has more experience, which is gonna be a lot more expensive, which is why, why can't we use, you know, multiple folks on these projects as we get going, maybe get started with one that we feel comfortable with now and let them all participate at some capacity. I don't know how that works, I don't know how we, you know, we put that together, but, you know, it makes, makes sense to me.
Right, to sort of have, there, there's different projects with different needs, I mean, as we said, you know, one has a lot of remediation and is huge and there's, there's others, so.
And, and some are, and some are eighty million, a hundred and twenty million.
Right.
Some are eight or nine or ten.
Right.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I do want to remind the board that the work of the, the project manager is not to construct or build unless, let's say, the, the L R A Board will take one of these properties and say, well, we didn't find a qualified applicant and we will decide to...
We become the developer.
We become the developer.
Yep.
That's an option. However, for the other projects and, and that's why we have the presentation, it is to make sure, number one, that we can have a project manager that we could be with us at the table to negotiate, direct attorney, that's number one, look at the numbers that have been provided by each one of the applicant or the applicant that would be selected for the project and determine based on our negotiations of, because, you know, let's say in an apartment, an applicant can, can, can propose a thousand residential units and the L R A would say, well, even though it's within the urban renewal plan, but we think that it would cost, you know, on, a burden to the, to the city, let's say in terms of transportation.
Right.
And we could say, well, instead of a thousand, can you have six hundred? And then we can look at the drawing board because we have to, together with the, the, the applicant and look at more or less the numbers so we can determine, number one, with what would be the increase of our, of our tax revenue and number two, the feasibility of the project and third of all, because there's a price that we put on, each property has been appraised.
Right.
And therefore the project manager, so that would be the second, the third would be to work on a schedule that, that would determine when the project is gonna start, when it's gonna be, and when it's gonna be finished, what would be the timeline, because we heard during the several presentation that there's certain uncertainty, which is not good in some of the presentations, but now with the experience with all of them, all the developers that we have, obviously if there's underground contamination, there may be a delay, but we're working with E P A in some of the properties, not all, then the, the project manager is responsible to make sure that, on behalf of the L R A, to have, you know, make sure that there's a tight schedule, that we are not gonna have any delays or the prod, or the applicant is taking the city for full, making sure that, because we have a commitment, we're gonna have a commitment with the city in terms of how long the L R A should be able to, to complete all, some of, at least all of the projects and they're, they're gonna help, hold us accountable for it. Another important issue is that we do have a loan with the city.
Yes.
Okay, so the longer we delay or a project is delayed, the worse it is for us as, as a board. Therefore, the project manager would tell us, hey, listen, this is not going, what are the challenges of each one of the projects and how it could be remediated and also work with city, city staff to make sure that if they have, if, if they are in need of inspection or the required inspection, then it, it would be done as a liaison, the, the, the project manager will be a liaison in that case. So let's keep that in mind, so it's not a sip that this company is going to, obviously, and in terms of remediation and Ramon, you know this very well, that if you have a person that is gonna look first of all at the, and must have the experience of whoever is subcontracted by, by the project manager, should, should have the knowledge to know what is the remediation plan, how it's gonna be executed and is it, is it followed accordingly?
Anna just texted and she said she's very close to being, if anybody needs to know that.
Other question. Do we have any other questions?
Through you, Mr. Chair, we're able to possibly give this person, let's say, a contract for six months or three months or what have you with an extension so that we can feel or vet this person, whether there's gonna be a, a really well put together working relationship or not, or what are, what are we proposing, this is just a consultant, we use him when we need him?
Obviously, we need to, I believe that we advertise for these projects to be for a certain amount of time because the project, once it starts.
Right.
It needs to be completed, I mean, obviously, we should have a, a termination clause, right? I mean, obviously, we should have a, a termination clause, right? That at any time and for cost, I don't know, what's the term? What, what do we refer?
Any contract would have that. I mean, I, I stand, I stand by my earlier comments, I think when, when these gentlemen came in the first time around, that they're all they're all qualified, they're all, they could all provide great service to the LRA. Uh, it's, you know, we got, we got different levels of service, I mean, Colly's is obviously a high-capacity operation, and these gentlemen have, have different capacities, but all uh, tremendous experience. I don't see any reason why, as the board is going through its deliberations in selecting a project to move forward with, a developer to move forward with, that in connection with that termination, also select project managers suitable for that particular project. Like Merrimack Paper may require a project manager of a certain capacity. Um, Common Street may require a project manager of maybe not that ultra-high capacity. So in connection with your deliberations and selecting the project you want to see move forward, pick which one of these guys you want, and, and we could, you could have them all on board going forward and just have a sort of a unwritten commitment that, as this progresses, we're going to be hiring you for a project. Not the whole city project, because I don't think any one of these guys should have the entire city.
Exactly.
But each guy will have, each, each company will have a project, or maybe multiple projects. And in connection with those projects, maybe at some point, you might bring in the other project manager to help the the one that you selected for that smaller project, because there's some issue that the project manager you hire may, may not have the capacity to handle. I mean, I just think that there could be flexibility to have all of these, uh, project managers involved with the city as we progress.
So that would that determine, that be determined by us making a commitment on our part to use this team or this, this combination of teams?
And, and for each, and for each project, have contract with these guys, contract with the specific company to oversee that project that we can work on as we move forward. I, I mean, I assume very soon, you're going to be moving into deliberations and starting to select
Projects.
The projects.
Yes.
And I would say with that, each guy, that's just a suggestion. Because I think that's what I'm hearing from Mr. Kejada, I think that's what I'm hearing from Mr. Kezada.
Yep.
And I, I think that's very logical and, and practical uh, thinking.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The only disadvantage with that is you would have multiple and multiple payment arrangements. The LRA, under these circumstances, uh, the, they say, walk slow but steady?
Yes.
Okay, so if you have three companies coming in, and you still have to make a selection, that's part of the bit. You have the, uh, if you have three companies working, what would be the amount that you're going to pay three companies? So there's where the conversation we had last time is the developers', um,
Participation?
The, 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 the cost sharing.
Yeah, maybe that's a question to, to ask to the, uh, different, uh, prospective project managers, if they have experience working with organizations like the LRA that, that may, may be limited in its capacity to pay, but is going to rely upon the specific private developers to offset the expense of the project manager that, that's going to be working for the LRA.
Yeah, the only, the only disadvantage, which we're later, I discussed that with James Karas, what would be the pro and cons about it? Is that, yes, it works, it's a, it's a, it's a standard practice within the industry. However, uh, like the Dutch say, whoever pays determines. So if you, you're paying as, let's say, the LRA, you can have a demand, but if you have the, uh, the private company also paying, they also have a say. Okay, and those are the issues that we need to consider and come up with an idea, because it's contingent upon the location. Uh, we, I think the largest location that we have is the Merrimack Paper, which has huge challenges.
Right.
I am sure, if I'm a developer and I'm looking at a property and where funding is an issue, because they have to go after funding, government funding, and come back, because we don't have the funds, we have an appraisal of the property in which we can negotiate up or down, depending on the market and depending on the, on, on, on the appraisal, uh, the value of the property. And no one is going to tell you, hey, listen, I'm going to decontaminate a place. At the same time, I'm going to pay you as part of a LRA, X amount of dollars, because they want to definitely offset
That cost.
That cost.
Yes.
We need to use our common sense and not be afraid of making a decision, just, and, and another thing, yes, of course, we have, right now, it's seven properties, because one of the eight properties needs to go before, uh, the, the state as a second minor amendment. So it's seven projects that we need to, to start with and determine that. So Merrimack Paper, uh, depending on the Methuen site, if it's going to be piecemeal, and that's your decision, or you're going to make a decision of doing it an entire development instead of one, only one part. We have Methuen Street, uh, I mean, Common Street, which is a smaller one, and Essex Street, which we're going to have a presentation tonight, is the smallest, I think, the smallest all of all. Um, however, be considerate of the fact, because we, we're sending a report, just like you went and sent to the state, we're sending a report to the city for us to be reimbursed. So there's multiple things that, that, that you need to make to consider when you're voting. Because it should, it would have been, it would be a disservice to all of the applicants, uh, that, that submitted their application now, because they're going to tell you, yeah, we'll take the job, but are you be able to pay us?
Right. And, and to piggyback off Octavian's, uh, idea with, we have to do share responsibility that we have with our budget, we would probably want to consider, uh, a scorekeeper that directly reports to us, the board, somebody that, um, would, would directly report these timelines, lengths, uh, where we stand, any potential delays, not necessarily to the uh, developer. That, that's one thing that I'd like to consider, and then, just as importantly, the main concern that I see here is, I believe, uh, just in terms of effectiveness, is we have, is one site that I'm particularly concerned about, and that's Merrimack Paper. That's a collaborative effort regardless. We should have, uh, multiple eyes on that, if not just one. But I feel that with the presentation that we've had, we have, we have a person who has the ability to manage those smaller projects. And I think that with Merrimack Paper, we want to have the very best or combination of multiple eyeballs looking at that project, just because of the size and scope.
Right. Good.
Through you, Chair, I agree with Pedro, uh, and also Octavian, I think we have to have one person that is working with us from, you know, day one, once we, once we, uh, award these projects. And collectively, we decide where he, he can be more effective or where we can, you know, he, he better use. We also decide, like, on the, on that paper side, that huge project, as well as the other project of the Pemberton Park, what company can best assist us? It's going to be basically a by, a project-by-project basis, even though we have someone that's working with us, that's knowledgeable in the construction industry, because I don't have the expertise to, to, you know, to give us that update, so we need that person that, that has it.
Yep.
Again, again, then, um, for the spirit of moving this forward, right? Uh, and, and I think, basically, all the comments have been said. Can we then separate Merrimack Paper as a separate project?
Yes. Because it, it's going to happen.
They also want to, as Pedro indicated, may also want to include Pemberton, which is a big
Okay.
But anyways, I hear the logic, I understand.
Right, to separate the, and with the, with, with the, with negotiating with when we say multiple, I believe we should select the primary, right? Correct me if I'm wrong. And then the, for the other two projects, so project one would handle the smaller project, then we have the other option of Pemberton Park and, but definitely definitely Merrimack Paper. Based on the numbers that were presented and based on
The scope?
The scope.
Okay.
And, and and I can add, because there's something that we spoke about, uh, just, uh, Brian and I yesterday, right, when did we meet? Friday.
Friday.
Friday we met, and we can assign also the, um, the unit hydro.
Three hundred canal.
Three hundred canal as part of, of their responsibility to have that individ, that company to do the to hi, I mean, what do you call it, lease, lease the, the, the whatever, forty-seven units we have, or close to fifty?
Yes.
And they can deal with it.
So as a board, do we need to organize these projects in terms of scopes, so that we can, we can name a project manager? Will that help us organize this better? Okay. So as a board, are we prepared to, let's start with, uh, Pemberton and, um, Paper? You understand what I'm saying? Yeah, so basically, what, what you're saying, Eric, is you'd like to have a project divided into Right. Pemberton and, and Merrimack Paper. One separate project manager, and the other smaller projects combined into one, one direct project manager.
Right.
I think.
Or even if we need some, some dividing based on scope, because
I, I, I agree with your initial assessment, too. Just Pemberton Park and Monmouth, I believe, I mean, good advice. Where it could have one direct scorekeeper, these smaller projects.
Right. Okay.
And Pemberton, yeah. And, and obviously One project, and the rest of the other project would be
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, and, and I know that Octavian mentioned the management of Three Hundred Canal Street, forty-seven units, the marketing aspect of it.
Yes, but that would be an assignment that we could give, because the other ones that would be multiple small proj, smaller project. But we need to, we need to have, I might suggest that would be one major, one primary, that would handle the we will include within the scope, the hydro unit as well. Okay? And then the secondary, or the second, uh, the second company would manage the, the two other projects. Uh, Pemberton and
Or it could be a combination of the other Could have all three applicants involved in the process.
If they, if they sold it.
I, I hope that that would be amenable, because there's a lot of work.
The money.
Okay, so as a board, how do we organize this and how we make this proposal to our applicants?
So, Mr. Chairman, I think what, what you need to ask your fellow members is for a motion to, um, engage a project manager as Octavian indicated, for, uh, the, uh, smaller developments, not including Merrimack Paper and Pemberton. Um, with the understanding that those bigger projects, um, are going to be overseen by, uh, one of the other, or combination of the other applicants. So I think what we're talking about is, uh, you know, if I understand the direction of the board, it's hiring RAG to be the day-to-day manager of the, uh, smaller projects and unit hydro. And then when you decide on, uh, Merrimack Paper and Pemberton, that would be when you would want to engage either Colly's or, or this gentleman's company here, uh, as maybe one gets one project and the other gets the other project. So I think all three of the project managers ultimately are going to be engaged in the processes as you progress. I, I think that's what I'm understanding here.
Um, that's what I'm thinking, and board, what do you think?
That needs to be put in the form of a motion, seconded, and then the vote, uh, the board can uh, deliberate on it and, uh, then vote on it.
What's a smaller size, um, how much is it going to be, a hundred, uh, ten million? The smallest project?
Yeah, that's what it looks like.
It's ten million, the smallest one?
It depends, because last time, last year, I told you guys, the prices of construction are going up. We, we kept on talking about this, the price of construction as of next week is going to go up. Okay, so ten million dollars, that whoever speculates ten million dollars is not going to be. Okay, so let's start making decisions, let's throw motions, and then, so we, we can get past this.
Brian, could you repeat that suggested motion?
Um, I think that what you need, Mr. Chairman, is a motion to, uh, engage, uh, RAG, uh, as the, uh, the day-to-day project manager, uh, with an understanding that, uh, once the board, uh, decides on a, uh, uh, a selected developer for Pemberton Park and, uh, Merrimack Paper site, that the board would then, uh, engage the other two higher-capacity, uh, project managers to oversee one of, one of both of those projects. So we'd be, I guess, initially, what you, if the board votes on that, you would instruct me to, I guess, prepare a contract with RAG, uh, bring that to the next meeting, deliberate on that, come to an agreement. And then, once the selection is made on those other two larger sites, we would enter into contract negotiations with Colly's and the other project managers. What's the name of your company, sir?
Collaborative.
Collaborative. So.
And Three Hundred Canal?
Well, Three Hundred Canal would be overseen by the, by RAG. So that'd be part of, part of his, uh, job responsibilities going forward, uh, and give some direction as to how you want the contract drafted. And I go ahead and put something together for the next meeting.
Okay. Uh, can I entertain a motion? As suggested by our council? Yep, Anna, can I get a second?
I'll second that motion.
A roll call.
Uh, Sarah Perez?
Um, not, not on a vote of anything, yet.
Ramon Quisara?
Aye.
Pedro Tejada?
Aye.
Anna Medina? Chairman?
Aye, motion carries, thank you. So we'll begin, uh,
Take a break?
Can we take a break?
We can't take a break.
Can I get a motion to take a recess, please?
And who would be, can we have the first pres, presenter who is on the schedule?
Chino.
They're here.
They're here.
You ready?
Be ready, just set up and do whatever, so we
So we have a motion, have a second?
Everybody say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll take, we'll take, uh, how many minutes, five? The food is here.
Let's take ten. Can I make a motion to come back from recess? Can I get a motion? We have motion, can we get a second?
Aye.
Uh, roll call.
Anna Medina? Um, Sarah Perez?
Aye.
Pedro Tejada?
Aye.
Ramon Quisara?
Aye.
And Eric Water.
Aye. All right, if we're ready, can we get the timer? So when you're ready? You're ready, okay. Thank you all for coming.
Well, my name is Sanaa, I'm the CEO of O.P.D. And we are very happy to present our proposal tonight. Uh, we'd like to thank the board and the people who are part. I'm going to introduce, uh, my daughter, Valerie. Hello, Valerie, I'm the executive director for O.P.D. And I'm very excited about this project, and I hope you guys can see the vision that we're trying to protect over the new day of Lawrence. I also would like to introduce Peter, he represents tech, the engineer.
Good evening, I'm here also to see who are civil engineers, and we helped, uh, need to come up with this proposal for the project. Uh, I look forward to this confrontation and then answering any questions right away.
Um, I'm going to present a video with a summary of what the I'm gonna present a video with a summary of what the full presentation that you guys had. And it's a reflection, like a summary of what you guys asked for today's thing.
Everything's recorded. You won't lose any time, will you?
Do you have them timed, credit? With the chairman?
Please can we make sure we give them timed better? Okay. All gestures.
Hello and good afternoon, everybody, and thank you for the opportunity to present this proposal. Aquino LTD is a real estate development company founded by three dynamic Latinas, a mother and her two daughters. We created Aquino LTD to address key development challenges in the city of Lawrence and specifically in the downtown business area. Aquino LTD is committed to equitable development and leading in the redevelopment fields where Latina women have been underrepresented. In today's presentation, we will cover our project approach, financial capabilities, experience, references, and timeline as we described in detail in our response to the R F P. We hope that this will give you more confidence in our vision and ability to execute this redevelopment. Our proposal is for a seven-story mixed-use development featuring forty-five rental units, parking, and business and community plaza. These departments are designed to cater to diverse households, ensuring a blend of affordability and quality living in the heart of Lawrence downtown. Here is a brief overview of our team of amazing women leaders. Oneda Aquino is the visionary behind Aquino LTD. She is a serial entrepreneur with established relations within the Lawrence community that span over thirty years. She has a broad experience in real estate ranging from investments, redevelopment, and more. Oneda brings creative and innovative solutions that enhance the community of any project that she is involved with. Valerie Hernandez, a graduate student of UMass Amherst, plays a critical role as the executive director overseeing project implementation and ensuring the project aligns with the vision. Her role will be overseeing public relations and project management throughout the development process. Chanel Hernandez attended Marist and is a graduate of Northern Essex Community College. She brings strategic insight to her role of executive director where she will focus on financial operations and real estate governmental incentives. Chanel will be the lead operations manager, ensuring the project is delivered on schedule and within budget, maintaining a strong focus on financial discipline. Our design philosophy is inspired by Anacaona. Anacaona, the Taíno queen of La Isla Española, is renowned for her leadership, tenacity, and her strong commitment to the people she led. Her dedication to her community was so uncompromising, she refused to yield to the oppression of the European occupiers and was executed for it. She became a symbol of conviction, resistance, and resilience. A female heroine that inspired us to embark on this initiative and to represent Hispanic women business leaders within this field. Her legacy has profoundly inspired our project, Anacaona Lofts. Now, for our project approach, Aquino LTD is committed to revitalizing the downtown area through visionary real estate development that empowers Latina women and foster vibrant, resilient communities. The proposed development covers three lots on Essex Street totaling approximately ten thousand three hundred and forty-five square feet. The goal of this project is to provide a vibrant mixed-use space that strikes a balance between contemporary living, active retail, and community. Anacaona Lofts will feature Anacaona Business and Community Plaza located on the second floor and residential units above. Anacaona Lofts is a unique mixed-use development that will redevelop the city-owned lots currently used for surface parking into a higher best use. And will address the city's pressing shortage of high-quality housing, the need for jobs, downtown revitalization, and parking. This will positively impact city tax revenues as well. The project features five stories dedicated to residential living emphasizing comfort and security. Each floor is thoughtfully designed to foster a sense of community while providing privacy and modern amenities. The five residential floors will offer a diverse mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units, providing a range of housing options to meet various needs. Spanning over forty thousand square feet, this residential space is designed to deliver high-quality, affordable homes. That contribute to Lawrence's housing supply while promoting economic diversity within the community. A key feature of the Anacaona Lofts is the Anacaona Business and Community Plaza. Approximately nine thousand two hundred and eighty square feet of retail space on the second floor will support local businesses and community. Including women and minority-owned enterprises, reinforcing the community's commercial base. And a community plaza for tenants and business patrons to relax and enjoy. The community plaza is envisioned as a vibrant, open space designed to bring people together. It will serve as a welcoming hub where residents and visitors can gather, relax, and connect with one another. The plaza will feature thoughtfully-designed seating areas, greenery, and walkways to encourage social interaction and enhance the overall atmosphere of the development. By fostering a sense of community, the plaza will become a vital part of downtown life, supporting local events and providing a shared space that everyone can enjoy. Located on the second floor, the retail space is designed to provide opportunity for new and existing businesses to start or expand operations. It will also offer space options for micro entrepreneurs to launch their startups at modest cost per space. This will increase economic activity, create jobs, and improve the offering of goods and services available to tenants and the community. This vibrant area will promote foot traffic and community interaction. We envision in creating a vibrant commercial space where small and micro businesses can thrive. The project will preserve and expand the existing number of parking spaces. It will feature two underground levels along with a ground-level parking garage, providing parking for residents and retail customers. With over sixty parking spaces and convenient access to Essex Street. This project will generate significant benefits for the community. It will provide business venues that encourage Latina entrepreneurs through spaces tailored for local, small, and micro business startup and expansion. As a note, we want to promote more Latina business owners and Latinas are the fastest-growing entrepreneurs in the country. We are targeting twenty-five percent of the units to be affordable housing and remaining units to be market rate in order to expand options for residents and promote diversity. This project will also generate both construction jobs and long-term employment opportunities with a strong emphasis on hiring locally. Our project will contribute to expanding economic growth by expanding the number of small and micro businesses and the goods and services available to visitors and residents. Community spaces that are for tenant, visitors, and business patrons, creating a positive experience and better quality of life. We will be seeking lead certification to ensure healthy, efficient, and cost-effective operations. And crucially, revitalization of downtown lots and expanding the parking, which is a high need, especially on Essex Street. Anacaona Lofts will also have positive benefits to the city, some which include increased tax revenue, water and sewer, construction permits, helps promote local small businesses. Local spending, and also increases attraction to downtown. Aquino LTD has done its preliminary due diligence and secured initial letters of interest from financial institutions and investors. We will also be investing our own capital into the project. We plan to expand the sources of funding upon the successful awarding of this project. The total project budget is estimated at fifteen million dollars covering design, construction, and marketing. Aquino LTD is pursuing a majority private financing scenario, which will be updated as new incentives become secured. We present the scenario as a realistic portrayal of Aquino's financial capability to secure financing and fund the project. This is evidenced in our proposal as we secured bank letters of interest and terms from Reading Cooperative Bank and Enterprise Bank. Where it outlines the financial conditions that Aquino LTD will meet to satisfy underwriting criteria leading to construction debt financing and then to permanent real estate mortgage loan. In addition, Aquino LTD will tap its expertise and close relationship with traditional and non-traditional capital providers, including local, regional, and national institutions. One of our private investors is Custom Die Cut, Die Cut USA LLC. Which is a thirty-seven-year-old family business wholly owned and led by its dynamic owner, Brian Reese. The total assets are over three point five million dollars and gross revenues north of two point one million. The Aquino team brings a broad experience to the project, a proven track record in mixed-use development within the city of Lawrence and other venues. With the majority of the team members headquartered in Lawrence, this sets a solid foundation for the local impact and a successful project. Oneda Aquino brings many years of experience in various aspects of real estate development, acquisition, investment, and rehab development. She purchased her first mixed-use property in two thousand and ten, which was the first brick building in Lawrence. Subsequent to that, she has rehabbed and redeveloped multifamily dwellings. She has experience in real estate investment, having invested in a three hundred and ten-unit development in Costa Rica. Here is another look at some other properties Oneda has redeveloped in Miami, Florida. Tech is an award-winning full-service engineering firm headquartered in Lawrence. With over twenty years of experience, Tech has a proven track record of creating high-quality projects. The firm employs more than eighty professionals, including thirty-one licensed engineers, bringing a wealth of expertise to our endeavor. Serrano Serrano Construction, Inc. is a minority-woman-owned small-business enterprise with over fifteen years of experience working in cities, residential projects, as well as federal contracts. Bell Tower has earned the reputation as a proven commercial real estate property management company. Providing vision and insight to enhance commercial properties to attract and retain quality tenants. The project is expected to be completed within a period of twenty-four months following these key milestones. Phase one, site selection and land acquisition. Phase two, pre-development. Phase three, development and construction. And phase four, post-construction. We are extremely excited about the opportunity to work with the L R A board and the community to bring this vision of Anacaona Lofts to life. Together, we can foster economic growth, enhance quality of life, and empower local entrepreneurs, especially Latina women who play a key role in our community's future. Thank you for your time and consideration. We look forward to your questions and discussing how we can move forward together.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Chair, a technical question for you.
Yes.
So the engineer, sir, welcome. What's your name?
Peter Els, the T C.
Thank you, Mr. Brian Calligan. Nice to meet you. I love the idea of varying the parking.
Yes.
Looks like you guys are proposing two levels underground.
That's right.
Through this process, we've had a couple of people come in from other sites and propose some underground parking. Other developers have come in and said. They wouldn't do underground parking because it's hot prohibitive. I've heard that there may be issues with water tubes in the downtown area. I'm curious, from your technical perspective, what are the challenges of going underground? Are there other sites that you've worked on in Lawrence where there's barriers of parking? Because I think it's a great idea and I've loved, I always marvelled at. Post Office Square of Boston, right? Going to start a time park, eight levels of parking underground.
Sure.
Just incredible. If that could be done here in Lawrence, I think that would solve a lot of problems. So you could just speak to that for a minute.
Yes, thank you. I think the, the underground parking in this project is one of the great benefits of the project. What's currently underutilized, it's about twenty-ish spaces at the surface. Will be turned into sixty-two, sixty-three spaces underground. You mentioned a lot of the challenges. Those are very common with any type of underground parking, right? Cost and droughtwater table issues. There are ways around that. The, the style of construction to create the underground parking. Is, it's kind of a, a combination of supportive excavation, so they would, they would drill. Shaps down into the ground and then they would use either timber or concrete lading to basically support the outside of the, of the site. And allow the contractor space to then come in and form the, the concrete excavations. There would need to be dewatering, we, we would expect during the, and throughout construction. And there are ways to handle stormwater. You can create foundation drains around the outside and under the slab of the floor. That would direct any groundwater into a containment system that could then be pumped outside of this. So that's actually. And you, are you aware of any, I can't think of any other buildings in the downtown area where they have underground parking. I was just curious why that, you don't see that more often? Yeah, I mean, I, I think, like you said, it's very common in Boston, right? And urban settings. So this may be the first of its hand in Lawrence, but it has to happen somewhere and this might be a great spot in on Essex Street without bound.
Any other questions?
Chair, through you.
Yes.
Yeah.
What, what has been the largest?
I have a question regards to financials.
Oh.
We have a board member first.
Yep, Ramon, go ahead, sorry.
Mr. Chairman.
No, no problem.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
What has been the largest project that Aquino L T has done here in Lawrence, like development?
Myself?
How many, yes, how many units?
Three units? But that's why I'm hiring companies that can do the job for me. If I wouldn't be. You guys ask for minority firms to do this, there's no minority films. They're gonna be able to do this by themselves. That's why I hired Ted. That's why I hired. Ceranos and Serranos and they have proved themselves that they can do this job.
Absolutely. Sir?
Financials. I see that you got, you have two letters of reference, the reference letters from the bank. There's no commitment from the bank. I can read the letters. They're reference letters. They're saying that they know of Brian Reese. And they're saying completely there that they don't commit to anything. But Brian Reese isn't even part of the corporation. When you look up Aquino, they're not even part of the corporation, but you're mentioning him as a partner, but he's not a partner.
To your information.
Wait, wait, I have, I'm not finished with the question. So you have two reference letters, no financial commitment at all. So how is that a financial? How does that?
Through your mission?
Yes.
Okay. For your information, Brian Reese is my husband and we own that company and that's why he's investor in my project.
But he's, but he's only getting a reference.
Be under confrontation with someone, they would drop his.
No, I'm asking the question for the public. It's a reference. You don't have, you have reference letters for financials. Okay, 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 okay.
This probably means very, makes too much for us to be discussing with.
But you don't have financial.
Sir.
I don't have. Excuse me.
Me, Attorney Richard Degg is still representing Aquino Limited. This is totally inappropriate.
Inappropriate, really, two reference letters.
You made your point. It's inappropriate. You're not here, we're not here to comment with you, argue.
Really?
We'll find the proper forum for that, believe me.
Oh, we will.
In the meantime, a lot of visitation and the board to question and have their concerns. If they have any concern, they should be impressed.
Two reference letters?
Everyone, everyone, this is my meeting.
Keep it, Chair.
Stop. Sir, thank you for your question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The time is up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
Now, hold on. We, we can allow.
Your time, technical, for a digital call. Please continue.
I would like to thank it for taking the time for us, and we're looking forward to your decision.
Thank you very much.
That the Reading Bank letter that we have here actually says that once we get the property, it had a plan with that. It's not two letters of references. Enterprise Bank is a reference letter. They said that they are willing to help us, and they see that we have the financials in the bank to do a project like this. Reading Bank, if you read it, it says that they were willing to do seventy percent of hard costs of our project, of construction costs for our project. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just wanna know, just make sure that the board has all the, they asked all your questions, Ramon? You have a question? All right.
Yes.
We're finding forty and forty-five in total. Be twenty-five affordable.
Twenty-five percent affordable?
Twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five.
No, twenty-five percent.
Chair, Chair, if I may, through you.
One second. Anna has a question, Ramon. Right after that, okay?
Thank you. Yep.
It's in here. I'm sorry. All the details are there. So if they're gonna tell you. It's not here. Okay, yeah. For a three-bedroom apartment, there's five that have a three-bedroom, two baths, and then there's ten, fifteen that have two bedrooms, two baths, five that have three bedrooms, one bath, and then five that have one bedroom, one bath. They should be involved. As you can see it.
We had a question remotely, Ramon?
Are you the floor to Mr. Karris? He had his hand up first.
I just wanna give the board a technical clarification relative to financing commitments. The RFP did not stipulate there must be a firm financing commitment for the project. And at this stage, it, my opinion is, is that it's most likely premature, and that from a debt perspective, in other words, a bank lending, there's not a bank that is going to make a firm financial commitment on a speculative project. So just, just so the record, the, the RFP did not require firm financial commitments. Financial capacity in terms of the developer equity and other sources of equity, certainly the more specific, the, the stronger the proposal will be. But again, for the record, no firm commitment had to be presented by any, any of the proposals.
Thank you, James. Ramon?
Thank you. Mrs. Aquino, I was just curious, will you be seeking any funding from the state or the federal government for the twenty-five units that will be affordable?
Yes, I will.
Did you have a follow-up, Ramon?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, 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 no.
I was, I was, first of all, I was gonna say that innovative design idea with the underground parking, my, my hope and desire is that it is awarded to, that it is something that can be accomplished. And just as importantly, the sizes of the apartments, what would.
It's all in the plan.
It's all in.
Everything is in the plan. All the high stuff, everything.
Okay.
See, so.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Okay. Who is next? Yeah, we'll go this. Fire, are you ready? Thank you for coming.
CR, fire, say it.
Very much.
Do we have to? Oh, definitely. Oh, it's different.
Guys, good. Friends, friends.
I'm Tilburg. Speak to Nadal. Who's Tilburg? Johannes Van Tilburg. Yeah, speak to Nadal. Okay, good.
Yeah.
Ah, okay. You see, then I'm Tilburg, yes. Ich bin Abkhams von Naruba, Marek. I have all the.
You can see Dutch.
Yes, you are.
Yeah.
Is he?
Yeah, good.
Nice.
Yeah.
My heavy hitters.
You did. I feel safe against drag. We are, we ready for turn? We are ready.
All right.
Time is starting.
Well, after that, I thought I had to put some training here on. That was crazy.
No, we're good.
By the way, I went by tonight to the canal. I did not see that car. So I don't know. It's not there.
Magic.
Magic. I guess I can play it, so. So I'm back. So just repeat myself. My name is Sam Suzuki. I'm the CEO of Side Group, also Sperry Capital. And I'm a professor at UCA. I teach real estate development. And tonight, I'm not gonna talk too much about our company. I'm gonna talk about the vision of Lawrence. So with that, I would like to introduce Jan van Tilburg. I'm gonna give you a little background. We spoke a lot about mixed use. The inventor, the creator of design, happens to be Van Tilburg. He is, he taught at USC, and he taught here at Harvard, at the Architecture School. He is the creator of the mixed use. So he actually wrote the book. So he's also a knight of the Dutch government for LA. He also designed the district of Los Angeles, Big Six, sixty-nine projects in Los Angeles, part of the design of Los Angeles. So he knows what to do here to get it over the board. I brought my hero. Well, after that, I'm gonna be patient in touch. Certainly won't.
Yeah. Some would understand, yeah.
Thank you. Well done. So, yes, that I, I'll get inside. I've done mixed use. I kind of pioneered it early on in Los Angeles, in the eighties. There wasn't even a lot of banks in New York. So some examples first of mixed use. All of retail down below, it creates eyes on the screen. Big example, this Hollywood, where one thousand units. Los Angeles is a big kind of place that very much. Some brick buildings in Denver, you know, Denver, well, New York, ten more. This is about the Spanish, this is about the. We want to say, no time, no time for that. So here, one of, we've done sixty-two projects on or near light rail stations at the developing light rail square, late in history to Los Angeles. We want to align with city goals and, and, and planned three projects around there. The green belt, you made activity with the, with the. Next one, please. Project vision. So, so we designed three projects around that my client selected wanted to enter this project. We're talking about that, it's a beautiful site. Two eight-story buildings, a parking structure on gray, it's a build, both parking is less expensive on gray. On top of the structure, we have a pool. Usually, eight stories. Landscaping the connectivity to the park, wanting to connect the park, the park, it's all next. Some slides, but it's a blue slide, do some along the park, we do. X slide, X slide, X slide. So here then, we've added some things since our last meeting. I, I wanted one of, one of my partners from Denver, I was here the last time. We made that base, light up the building, like an activity to the park. A recreation and, and whole building of property. What we want to make sure that we have recreation space because we heard from the input from the, from the community, they wanted some kind of recreation space. So we put a soccer field, we had some cafes and mixed use in the, in our design. So units are very important, light, air, open space, tall ceilings, connectivity, sense of arrival, these are all our projects, not. These are our spaces, roof terraces, chairs, pet center, many amenities, home office, office center. rooftop, terraces on the roof, connecting again to the river. The river beautiful, clean, really connected. Project will be very sustainable. Mental feasibility, so I, as you know, on last week I said, and you already, I know you already checked my references. So we brought Greystone in. We're gonna bring Greystone. They love this project. We are designing a mixed-use building. We are implementing all the ideas from the council. We're gonna put a swimming pool on top of the parking facility. So we're keeping that a separate building so that it can be open to the public, so no one's going through the residential buildings. That was part of our concept. And then we, we did that because we noticed that there were no pools around. And we said, hey, this is a athletic, a sport facility, but it's gonna be opulent. So that's what we put together. And then the, we also had our other references checked. We are, we have very good relationship with Newmark, and Newmark has a capital equity division, and that was checked by our references. We know because they called us and said, people called about our references. So we have the capability. As I said before, my company, we have thirty-two hundred employees. Although there's only three of us here, there is a big team behind my company. And we are gonna come in and help with providing that electricity that we talked about. We really think that's very important to bring in the jobs and bring in the tenants. And the tenancy is one of the big, we can build it, but no one will come. We wanna build it and make sure people come and stay in the city of Lawrence. So our timeline is roughly, we're looking at three to five years. Depending on how the designs are, so Jan has worked with the city of Los Angeles, and it took roughly, what, three years, two years, two, three years? Timeline of project like this, DIR, delivery plans, six to eight months, construction documents, six to seven months, building permit issuing, three or four months, and then construction. Couple of years, two, two and a half years, so. So it's a five-year project. So Jan is gonna collaborate with the city of Lawrence to put together the project. So we don't know exactly what the needs are gonna be, but with that, with those needs of the city, that's gonna be designed with the urban planning. And he's an expert on urban planning because he wrote the book on urban planning. So that's why I wanted you to meet him, because he is, the books that you, the architects are reading, it's his book that they're reading. And then hopefully five years of making that about the city. My effort.
Well, it's like all the benefits. You see that there's many key goals centering for area development, economic development, sustainability, top creation, through quality of life and force, implementation of the new plan. As we mentioned, we have, we are affiliated with Sperry Commercial, Sperry Broker. I've backed over six million retail space across the US, offices nationwide. We have the capability to attract any tenant to Lawrence, including biotech firms, companies, medical offices, other high-growth industries that open jobs to Lawrence. Our, our team has over a hundred years of combined experience, learning any risk for Lawrence overall. Working with the largest high-financing company called Greystone, to ensure that these lots are ready for implementation without any sort of issues, right, financially. To emphasize our commitment, as we mentioned, Mr. Jan Tilburg here, personally is here tonight in Lawrence. Yeah, Timmy.
Timmy, you got it.
Thanks so much. He's an expert in urban planning, as Sam has mentioned. He's demonstrated his dedication by coming down to Lawrence, and we wanna transform Lawrence altogether. As Sam mentioned, we're once also give profit back to Lawrence for infrastructure, work as partners. We're highly flexible and open to collaborate with Lawrence to make any necessary modifications that aligns with the needs of the LRA and the community. We have pitched for multiple lots. Perdido Park is our ideal fit. The size and location is aligned perfectly with our development strategy, making it a high priority for us. That said, we remain fully committed to contribute to Lawrence's growth and transformation, or this, this site specifically, or the additional opportunities that we have spoke about in the last two weeks. Over the past two weeks, we have also proven our ability to meet Lawrence's key development criteria, including improving experience and expertise. We have successfully delivered similar projects with highly qualified team members, project vision and redevelopment approach. We have demonstrated a clear strategic plan tailored to each lot and partnership with Lawrence. Financial capacity and funding, partnering with Greystone, the largest high-financing company we do, to ensure project execution. Lastly, timeline and visibility. We have provided a realistic, actionable, developed plan, ready for implementation. Overall, we believe in these projects. We believe in Lawrence, and we are ready to deliver. We appreciate this opportunity to allow us to collaborate together in this vision. We look forward to working together with you guys, LRA and the community. Anything else, gentlemen? If not, case closed. Any questions?
Love it.
We rushed because we wanted to leave.
Chairman, through you.
Yes.
Yep. Gentlemen, just curious, you've got, you're proposing four hundred and eighty units of mixed sizes and numbers, and five hundred and twenty parking spaces, which is slightly over, playing one, one space per, per unit, which is well under the zoning requirements. So I'm just curious what the thought process is there? Is there some thinking that?
The design of the units.
Okay.
The design of the units. I think I, I mentioned it before, because of COVID, it really changed the, the concept of apartments. So normally, we would have done studio, one bedroom, two bedrooms. Now, because of COVID, the tenants want a den. So it would be a one point five. So we're designing this more toward a tech or the commuter to Boston, coming into March, or in remote access. So the design was thinking target audience, one point five, a lot of one point five, which is the one bedroom, it ends more studios than the two bedrooms. So that kind of lowered down the ratio of cars, and that, that, that's what's our thinking. And we, our thinking was also to build a structure not connected with the building outside, so we could put the pool on top of it, so that it would be a separate building, it would be a separate entranceway, and it would be open to the public so that they could use the facilities. That answer your question. Okay. Yes. Yes. I'm looking that way.
Yeah, any other questions?
Yep.
I may have dismissed it, but what are you looking at for a total outlay in terms of project cost?
I'm sorry?
Project cost, sorry.
Uh, we were in the numbers of about one eighty, about a hundred and eighty-five million. But, um, that's probably gonna change because Octavia just mentioned that construction cost has gone up. Uh, but we do own technology, we are in the, uh, we are in different, uh, sectors of construction. We do three D printing, which is twenty percent lower in construction cost. We don't, we don't think we can use the, our three D printers on this, but, uh, we feel that, uh, since we're not going underground. Which is extremely expensive, we can lower the cost. That's the reason why we designed above ground parking, because we took the cost of how much it would go four stories down, which is too expensive. So we said, let's separate the land, let's put some public facilities on top, which was a swimming pool. And put the four stories of garage parking, that was the, the cheapest way to go.
And, and you know, of course also, that fourth floor is the roof of the third floor. You need building a three story structure.
Yeah.
Yep.
I have a question. Really, you might not hear it, uh, these are rental or estate?
This is for rental, the, the other project was for selling.
Average, uh, month per, sorry, average month per unit?
So we're, we're building workforce housing, so we, we're trying to target workforce housing. So we're gonna do a blend of workforce housing, so we'll, we're targeting AMI between that eighty to a hundred percent AMI. So we would like to stick to that, um, but it really does depend on the construction cost. And it depends on how fast we can get to CD during construction year. When we get to the construction year, we'll really know what your budget is. So everybody can tell you what they think it is gonna be, but in three years from now, we don't know.
Any more questions? Amol, James, are you guys still there?
We're here.
Do you have any questions?
No, I mean, we've seen you.
I do not.
We've seen you plenty of times, we know.
I know you're getting sick of me, I know, I know, you see.
Maybe a question for me, I haven't been.
You gotta have a question for Jan, the night.
Do, do you have a sword?
Pardon me?
Do you have a sword?
I have a sword.
No, it's not a sword.
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 Did they give you a sword?
I haven't fallen out of it yet.
Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you for coming. Thanks, no, you're ready?
We're good, we're good, all right.
Do you want me to stop you at fifteen and then give you back the question and answer? Do you want me to stop you at ten?
Just a wave, just a wave at ten would be.
Wave at ten.
Okay.
All right, good evening, everyone, my name is Mark Alon, here tonight with Ceramet Properties with our vision for the Pemberton site and its redevelopment. Uh, we encourage everyone on the board to, uh, take a look at our paper presentation, which I believe you've all been provided with a copy from our COBRA presentation. Uh, and also look at the video, which, um, answered many questions, um, in addition, uh, that we're not gonna really talk about, it's very irregular today. So, um, to start us off, though, I'd like to introduce Alberto Nunez, the president of Ceramet Properties and the lead investor, Alberto.
Good evening, uh, first of all, I want to say thank you to the member of the L R A for the, for setting the project again for the second time. Now, uh, I'm the president of Ceramet, Ceramet is a management company that is managing over thirty-two, thirty-four property right now. We've been in the city of Lawrence, working in different scale developer, real estate and property. And working with our community, especially in Lawrence, ninety-five percent of the property activity we have in the last thirty. Since the nineteen ninety-two real estate and since nineteen eighty-eight and running our own business. We are a local investor developer that we driving is the city of Lawrence every single day for a lot of thirty years. We run a Ceramet property, is a management, uh, co- uh, corporation that is owned by the family and run by the family. My two sons, me and my wife. We're driving every single day, having contact with the tenant, our tenant. And, uh, have a contact with them and driving every single city, every single street of Lawrence. Yeah, we are around all the time. We are being all possible developer, landlord.
One sec.
Yeah, and our background is working luckily, serving many families and small businesses in Lawrence. Uh, I didn't go too far away for nothing because I've been here and I love my city and, uh, in my, uh, background and our history from my family is, uh, deep down. And we do it now, we're working to it. We will, we will have this project done, uh, a liability that we put it together, I guess, from a, a nice camp. With all kind of different experience, financially, construction, engineer, architect, everything that they've been working luckily. In the American, in the, in the New England, and luckily in the city of Lawrence, say, hey, run, no, 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 maybe they're building a new construction. In, uh, around the area and they have history building, building, big building, all different scale, out in the area. Then that's exactly why I have my team with me. And, uh, and we've been dealing with, uh, developing different project for a long time, and that's what we do every single day.
Thank you, Alberto, just, um, to give a quick visual, so this is what the site looks like right now. And our vision for the site, um, once fully developed, um, is gonna look roughly like this with these three buildings and something else. But, um, I know an architect, Matt Jurus is from Fishworth Design, so he's gonna kinda walk us through the highlights of the buildings themselves.
Well, it's fine, um, so, you know, it's, it's a, it's a multifamily residential project, and the way we conceived of it is in, in parts. Um, we're arranging the, the residential units in three bar shaped buildings, uh, above two levels of parking. Uh, and we've, we've got street front retail, which is a bit, which we, we can see in the, in the, seeing around. Um, which really helps to sort of develop the streetscape of, of Canal Street. Uh, we're also imagining that we could do a restaurant, event space that. Buildings, um, overlooking the river. A gesture to, to the city. Uh, the, the units that we're, we're envisioning here are, are gonna be some studios, some one bedrooms. We're focusing on two bedroom and, and three bedroom, um, meaning kind of sort of in big slots, but we really wanna understand, um, that, that. The, the offerings that we, we put together here that are encouraging, um, we're anxious to remain. So this is, this is a project that, that is conceived with the families, um, and, and so. Um, the residential buildings that, that, um, are arrayed across the top of the apartment are generally in scale and form reminiscent of the mill buildings that we find upriver and, and, and on, on the opposite bank of, of Mariposa. Um, and we had them lined up perpendicular, parallel to each other and decided to splay them out so that we could give the maximum number of units of people near the river. Um, so you see that splay out here. Uh, by the numbers, it's a five story residential building, uh, above two levels of, of parking. Right now, we're, we're imagining three hundred and thirty-six dwelling units. Um, and this is adjusting as we get deeper into design and sort of find our, our way through the financials of this. Uh, it's, it's not, we've left three hundred and sixty, Austin parking on two, two levels, three hundred and four, four hundred and thirty-three spaces. Um, across North Canal Street, we're imagining twenty thousand square feet of street front retail. Um, tenant targets for us, we, we would like to have a grocery tenant, and we're thinking this is not, um, you know, a big box Shaw's or, or the Stop and Shop type. But more Aldi's or smaller local, regional grocery store, that's the part that we need to care, so we develop a streetscape. Um, we also feel that daycare is gonna be important, and we can maybe that, that focuses on the residential communities. And we think there's need for a cat egg on the streetscape as well. Um, and, and we mentioned that we shop, uh, for our event space and restaurants. Uh, central to our concept of, of this project is access to the river for both of the folks who live here. But also folks who are enjoying Pemberton Park, which is a familiar park along the river. Um, already public, already, you know, attention providing problems that we, um, we, we, we hope to acquire. Uh, and so we wanna be able to, uh, be mixed seamlessly with, with that amenity, the city, and encourage, uh, access to, to the river. Um, that's it, please.
Thank you so much, Matt. Um, so I just introduce a little bit more of the team, of course, everyone knows, um, real boss of, of Ceramet, Damaris, Alberto's wife. Um, also wanna introduce, uh, Tanya Hartford, she's, uh, uh, from Four Twenty-nine Development. She's a community book, uh, community focused real estate developer, urban planner, lots of experience, North Shore and throughout Massachusetts. Uh, our tech guy is also Bill Olson, the VP of Construction Ops from Windover. Which is also, um, in the process of building the new Esperanza Academy, two, two blocks over from the project site. And, um, Windover also did the, uh, rebuild effectively of Family Services right next to that. Um, rounding out the team, of course, Scary, which we'll talk about a little bit, but also wanna highlight our friend Gino Veroni. Gino is the principal and founder of Trident Project Advantage, where he is a global O P M, uh, who's, um, a large investment partner. And has done several sizable projects in the city, including Lawrence General, the Boys and Girls Club, and Central Catholic, just to name a few. So with that, um, we'd also like to talk to our, here, here from, uh, Alberto Junior, who can talk about some other community considerations related to the project.
Good afternoon, and thank you, Mark. Alberto Nunez, June, if you say my thought, you think. I'd like to walk you through, uh, uh, walk you through this map, what we did highlighting the property of Ceramet currently owns right now. Uh, as you can see, we have multiple properties, uh, we have a couple of properties all within walking distance, under two blocks, um, of the Pemberton, uh, part, of the place project. Um, this proximity gives us a unique advantage in managing, developing and supporting its growth. So right over here, we have on the island itself, we also have, um, the former Cardinal Shoe Corporation mill building with over four and a half acre plan. Right below that, we have the, uh, future Esperanza Academy School, which is currently being developed. And we come over here over the canal, we have the former, uh, Lawrence Glass, uh, Lawrence Glass and Windows, sorry. The, uh, yeah, the Lawrence Plate and Window Glass, um, commercial site, um, where Lawrence, uh, Lawrence, um, well, Spada Cis is currently there right now. And last, we have the pilot pub, uh, the former pilot publication, uh, on Canal Street. Um, for parking, we're proposing four hundred and thirty-three spaces in the new development. With our nearby properties, we can add over four hundred more spaces. This ensures plenty of parking and supports the future growth of the company in place. Also being in talks, uh, with Nevers for two, so maybe add some public transportation with the guy as well. Um, inclusion, this proximity allows us to provide a reliable, flexible parking solution to support the revenue both now and in the future.
Great, thanks, Alberto. Um, again, keeping on the community focus, I'd like to hear from, uh, Garrett and Gary, who can highlight some additional community considerations that are aligned with, um, the city's goals.
Thanks, and good evening, everybody. You know, overarching this entire development, as we've been kinda navigating this the last several months. Our focus has always been on, uh, making sure that we have elements of the urban role plan that was done, but obviously the RFP. So every decision we made when it came to design, use, layout, had those, had those features in mind. So obviously, economic development is on everyone's mind, we, we clearly think that this is a huge boost to that. Um, given the retail, commercial spaces alone that we've heard about. We do expect this to be about a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty full-time jobs that don't exist today to serve those two, those few, uh, uses. From a construction standpoint, obviously, it's a massive site, lots of units, lot to do. Um, we feel like there's gonna be about two hundred and fifty to three hundred construction jobs being, um, needed for this project. And our hope is that our local contractors are participating, they're bidding, they're working on this project, and they have a hand in it. And so we're gonna make sure that they know about it and try to get as many of them involved as we possibly can. So a lot of talent in the city, as we know, and we want them to, to have a piece of this pretty exciting project. Also, I know your RFP was very clear about some major things. One was revitalizing downtown. So like Alberto said, we're two blocks from, from downtown. So our feeling is with this amount of people living here, these types of uses, we do feel like there'll be spill over effects. A lot of people that are living here are walking across the street, they go into restaurants on Essex Street, they're shopping. And so that back and forth and being that link to the downtown, we feel is, is very important, uh, as we do, as we think about the project. Also, the, the environmental and, and urban environment is, is critical. As you can tell, and what Matt alluded to, a lot of environmental friendly elements here, it's solar, it's green roofs. It's also encouraging health and wellness and activities, so you see the activity at the back, you see the walking paths. And, and that, when it comes to health and wellness, I think we can all agree it's something we really wanna focus on, and we think that this project really hits that. Obviously, it's important to have mixed use, right? So we, we made a big focus on finding the right types of uses for the, for the community. Again, a grocery store, daycare facility, cafe, um, those are all things that we need and I think are, are perfect additions to this project. And obviously, for social and economic goals of the city, you know, the job creation, the tax revenues, improved quality of life, all those things we feel like we can. And we can't wait to have it, uh, on display.
Thank you, Gary. So again, final comments before we entertain questions. So, um, my day job, obviously, is the managing partner of L C W CPAs. We've, uh, worked with the Nunez family for, um, over three decades. Um, so on to the finance side of the project, we have had initial discussions with, um, several national banks, as well as regional banks. On financing between sixty to seventy percent of the total project cost. Additionally, the Nunez family is positioned to, um, personally fund approximately ten percent of the project cost. The remaining twenty to thirty percent, we're in initial discussions with strategic investors, impact investors. Um, that are, that are certainly interested in being part of urban revitalization, um, such as this project in Lawrence. Um, as Gary also alluded to, this is a green site, this is green property, we've had a lot of green space and trees and foliage around the site. Um, specifically with respect to the buildings, we are, um, anticipating exploiting as many federal and state incentives, um, as possible. Um, to, uh, especially those highlighted in Governor Healy's, uh, most recent housing bill. To, to really maximize, uh, the amount of juice we can get out of the apple to, uh, make this project, um, effective, healthy and green for the future of our city. So with that, thank you for listening, and we look forward to entertaining your questions.
Thank you. Questions?
Uh, I have a question, and the access to the, um, the park. The, the state park, part that is in the front, how would this, uh, how can we envision that? Do you know, you wanna talk to me for that?
There's nothing been changed, the access goes all the way to where it is right up, and underneath, through, so that has not been deterred. It's actually encouraged now, hopefully it'll be safer and more lit, more friendly to walk across.
Uh, in terms of, uh, market rate and workforce housing, what, what's, what's that look at?
Yeah, so, um, it's like, this is a project for, for Lawrence. So we, it, we, we, we need to, to, to keep in mind what's affordable, what's wireless. We're balancing that against construction costs and escalation as, as we're looking at it right now, it's hard to predict. Uh, but we are here to, to develop for the city and for the financials. So by the time we get deeper into the design, we understand construction cost, we can be able to tune a bit, a formula. Um, that, that will allow us to, to be more specific with that answer.
Gary, you wanna speak a little bit more about that, too?
Yeah, I, you know, I think historically, you know, with every project that the Nunez family has taken on, uh, they've. they've been, because they've been in the city for so long, they understand this market probably better than most of us. They historically have their, they know the rents that are out there, they're historically below that. And so at this point, given the fact that we're probably three or four years away, right, from knowing what that market's going to be, what those rents could look like, it's really, it's hard to answer that specifically, but I can tell you that when that comes around, we'll know what those rents are at that time, and more than likely, we're going to be very dependent, probably lower than what you see. It's hard to give you a very concrete number today, not knowing what four years from now might look like.
Other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Alberto, in one of your slides, you pointed out some of the other properties that your family owns in the area that potential parking. I was just curious if you guys have ever given thought to conceptually the possibility of a parking garage downtown that might service not only your site, but maybe provide somewhat much-needed relief to the city congestion? Just curious what you guys have given thought to on that?
Yes.
By the way, we have in a, right now, we have a schematic design that we have stopped all the project. We have, we have, we have a proposal in the old Cladafark three ninety-nine canal with three fifty-six, three sixty Essex Street, especially because this is coming out, this, this, this potential coming out. And then we have a schematic design and this, what we have right there.
Magic Cardinal shoe.
Exactly, yeah, right into the mill, bottom right there, we have, we have a schematic design for two parking garage, potential three of one in that area south. Also, we have around the mill, we have parking around the mill everywhere, then we, we have potential to. Because one of the reasons why we're here presenting this project, to be honest with you, and everybody in all making, we are concentrated in the island, and we know that we can make a master plan in the island. And we are concentrated and developing the right way. We have dozens of people that they want to go to the mill, they want to go to the old Cladafark, they want to do this, they want to do that. We have, we have to do the right use, and we are focusing that in the last five years. We're not, we're trying to, don't be greedy, just try to get, you know, financially, wrap the money and just, no. We want to take the time, the best use, the best way to develop the whole island. We, we think about the whole island, we're not thinking about Pepperton Park. Because Pepperton Park by itself, I'm not even be here tonight, to be honest with you. I'm here for the major plan for the island, and that's exactly why we're here tonight. And that's exactly why I guess I have this team that I have, we capacity to develop it the right way. And based on what we have done, and just adding a little bit about the rent. And I want to say this in full, because everything here is full. If you're not the number one, mine is more than a hundred yuan. I don't, I'm not the number three, lower rent, with a lower rent, affordable rent. In my history, and this is program that they have done in Lawrence before, from Boston. And that is the development they hired me to supply to them some information to see where my rent, affordable rent. And I never applied for any, any credit for nothing, I guess. We do it because we know the community, we work with the community, we have connected with the tenant, and we deal with the tenant, we're not enough. We're not enough people, we are, we deal with the tenant, have a contact with the tenant. Families and small businesses, different scale, and we always there to work with them, and that's exactly what we've been doing.
What is the timeline? What are you looking, what is starting to finish?
So what happens here is permitting is most discretionary permitting is always the file time. So if we look at a year to eighteen months permitting, maybe it's a year. Design will go within that period, but we see essentially three to five years.
Yeah, yeah, you know that we've mentioned before that we're trying to look at pre-permanence. As an option, they've installed with that OPD, we were looking at it as part of the incentive, and that remains the same. So you, after these presentations, what we are planning to do is to work with the zoning, planning and zoning board, that they can expedite and also understand, besides the board, understand the vision, that this is a, you know, not only smart growth, it's compact in its nature because Lawrence is only six point seven square miles. And sometimes people talk about, you know, what is in the trend, but forget that you have to adjust it based on the location. So that's one of the, the endeavors that we are going to pursue.
They'll be keeping success.
Yes, exactly.
At your time.
Thank you so much.
Okay, through you, Mr. Chair, James, James, you still there, right?
Yes, I am here.
Bring it into the conversation about the next step.
Yes.
That's item three, right?
Yes, James, are you ready to? About the deliberations? On these proposals? Can you, I'm sorry, can you be a little bit more specific, what is it on the agenda?
Yeah, James, we, through you, Mr. Chair, what we're trying to deliberate is the, our conversation today, what would be the best appropriate step to have the discussions concerning all this, these projects and for them to vote, for the board to vote, select and vote. So in my conversation with, with the mayor, as well as Mr. James Scarrow, I, we also spoke with Brian, and I had a conversation with, with Eric, with Eric today. The idea is to go immediately into selection of a, the best and, what do you call it, the most advantageous project in each one of the sites.
Yep.
I think we, that should be done, the board needs to look at it and, and by next week, have a separate meeting, and then to come and vote for each one of the sites. So that's, that's the, that's basically the idea, what we've spoken about. Do you want to elaborate or whatever in terms of?
Yeah.
That's.
Thank you, Octavian. I've, I've been in agreement with what you're proposing, and this is what we've discussed. I think it's, it's time, it's important that the board move forward with some of the, some of these proposals, if not all of these proposals, because you have twenty-three, twenty-two different proposals that you've heard. It can become quite a challenging task to retain your memory in terms of which ones you like, which ones you didn't. So it's important as, while these are fresh in your memory, to move forward as soon as possible. We talked about trying to schedule a board meeting next Tuesday on March fourth, if possible. And at that point, each board member could make motions in terms of which, on each site, and which proposer that you wish to move forward. And you would then vote as a board up or down in terms of instructing staff and myself to move forward with discussions and negotiations and putting together a draft development agreement. As you discuss this, I want to just be able to come back for a second and remind you on the key things that you should be considering, but I'll hold off on that as you discuss your next steps.
Yes, the, so, Mr. Chair, I think there should be consensus. Last, and we had our meeting, and this is to hold the board accountable. I think we divided the, the board into two committees, correct?
Yes.
I think you, Mr. Chair, and was it Pedro?
Sir.
We're on one, on the incentives. And I think, and Ramon, we're, we're basically having a look, even though all of you are going to look at the, at the, at the different application or proposals that you guys were supposed to be. I know everybody's busy, I'm going to repeat it again. I think we, we, we are doing a good job based on, on the, since we started, basically, the LRA started actively. However, I do caution you to move fast now. Now is the time to move fast because all these projects were reviewed. This is the third, basically, the third presentation, or basically the fourth, because staff has also met with all of these developers individually, and it's going for a year. It's a year in March, if I'm not mistaken. And that's more than, than enough time for the board to digest, understand. Look at the video on our website. Look at what exactly the urban renewal plan is, is requiring, or what have been previously discussed. There has been discussion, I think our attorney has submitted a minor amendment that needs to be taken into account concerning these properties and make a decision. Because after the decision, the work is not done. After the selection, the hard part begins in terms of negotiating based on what you, Eric, and Mr. Chair, and, and Mr. Pedro de Harav, what you're proposing in terms of incentives. And, but now is the time for us to meet, pick up, pick a date in order for the board to meet and select.
I agree.
I'm not going to be present. I mean, if it's next week, I have my surgery, I don't have to be here. You are, you can continue your meetings, your selection, we don't have a beef in this. Ramon, when are you coming back?
I am back on the fourteenth.
Why do we have to wait for Ramon? Ramon, you know, when are, can you be on, on the, on Zoom meeting for this?
I've been on every Zoom meeting since I've been on vacation, so nothing changed.
Okay, so, so, so right, so that's.
So that's a yes?
That's a yes.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, so, and we can make the decisions, or Ramon is going to be available, so we have, if, if, if everything goes well, we have a complete board to make, to make a decision. Because there might be certain discussion, but like tonight, that you reach a decision in regards to the project manager, I think that's the same procedure that you have to follow. Ask your question.
Think thoughtful consideration, and I think we're ready to go. You have enough, unless you, I think we have enough information to begin the process of partnering with these developers to get started.
Chair, through you, if I may. If I recall correctly, our last conversation, or the conversation before last, was that we were going to engage the city council, or the mayor, or both, have a discussion so that we got everybody on board. Has that changed since our last discussion?
Yes, it has, Ramon, it has changed. The mayor, and I had that conversation with the chair, as well as the, our attorney, the mayor wants you to do your job and make a selection. And therefore, once you have selected the applicant, it makes sense for you to go before the city council and say to the city council, these are, this, these are the projects, these are the developers, why they have been selected, or we have an attorney can do that, or we can, both can do it at the same time. Because this is not the most difficult job. The most difficult job is collectively, all the developers that have been chosen need to show their strength. And this time around, it's not staff going to negotiate with the state for funding. We are going to collectively show that we, we are one force, that we all believe in Lawrence. Because now, we're in a different predicament. We have a state that is, a governor that is Democrat, that is relying on federal funding, and we have a federal government that is putting different states in check. And I think that we have to start the lobbying process. As a redevelopment authority, we can get involved in lobbying together with our developers, and that is the approach that we should take. Lawrence is not going to stay behind and part of the, of that decision-making process. So for us to wait until we're going to go, and we're not convincing anyone, we're trying to work collectively in partnership and reach out to them, but we have an obligation, or you have an obligation as a redevelopment authority to, to make the, to complete the, fulfill the task that was assigned to you through the mayor.
So in essence, we're going to make a selection, and then we're going to work in conjunction with the mayor and the city council to go ahead and move these projects forward.
Correct.
Understood. I was not, I was not aware, but now I'm aware, as long as we have no liability as a, as a, as a board to, you know, to make, by making those decisions. My, my vote is a yes. As far as I'm concerned, let's vote on the two projects we saw tonight. We want to get proactive.
No, 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 I, I think it is a legitimate question, but we have an attorney.
Ramon, that this is, this is the way to go to do things by the book. There are so many, you know, subdivisions of the city involved here, everyone wants to say, but nothing is going to move until you guys make a decision on the best projects to proceed. And then, once we have your selections, we're going to go ahead and, and get all the various entities behind these, these projects. And obviously, the one being the most important, I think, is the city council, which has, over the last year or so, expressed some concerns about how this process is unfolding. But I think once they see these projects that we're going to be presenting to them, I, I don't see, I don't see how anyone cannot be behind this. But, but that's what we got to do. First step, select the best, and then put these projects together for city council.
Understood, thank you. Chair, through you.
Yes.
Is it possible for us to just vote on these two, on these three presenters tonight? Get started, or do we have to post it within the forty-eight hours, or the, the timeline that we need for the public to be able to view it?
Ramon, I'm not sure we contemplated deliberations tonight. I don't know if it was on the agenda, but I think we could.
I think it's on the agenda.
Are there, are there any, are there any projects we can deliberate on? No? I think there's, Ramon, I think there's unreadiness by far.
We're going to have to, producer.
Yes.
I think that, Ramon, it's, I think it would be wiser to wait, and we can have some discussions about it. And as a board speak, especially the subcommittees, to me. And then we can come back here and present it to the public with the residents of Sierra Springs. I don't think tonight, to rush like that is the best decision. We're going to have to wait, that's mine.
But next week could be, it could be a possibility next week?
When we decide what day we're going to meet.
The board's ready.
Then whenever the, yeah, I mean, if it is next week or the week after, but I don't think tonight.
So next week as in Tuesday, next Tuesday?
Let me, let me propose something.
Yes.
Let's, let's get, for the committees to meet. Okay, and then the following week, so the week of, the week of the tenth, make the decision, so the eleventh.
We'll just wait for Ramon, he'll be here in a couple days.
But why do we have to wait for Ramon? He said that he's going to be online. Let's be serious with that. Do we have to wait for you, and what is the reason?
You don't, you, you don't have to wait for me. We can do it, we can do it. That sounds good. I think that week is good because that gives us about a week and a half to, to talk between the little boards, just like Anna said. Because that gives us a uh about a week and a half to to talk between the little boards, just like Anna said, so I agree with that.
So uh uh James, are you, I don't think that James. That we, the, that you are needed in this pro- uh I mean, in that process, only with with uh if. If you and and Ramon have additional questions.
Do you have a question? James, were you speaking?
I I was not, no. No, he was that, and then make a, make a uh because the city council in March. Will be meeting again. On the eighteen.
So are we committing to make our decisions so that they can be presented to the city council by the eighteen?
I think so, yes, of course, what do we have to wait for?
Understood.
Ramon, do you have all the information you need?
Yes, I have all the emails, I have, I have all the information, Anna, and what I can do is we can set up a time for you and I to discuss. Uh each project again.
Good.
Yeah, that's fine, so we just, we just want to make sure that we have this right.
Right.
Chair, through you. To speak, to discuss and delivery about this.
So are we, are we proposing discussion next week and then decisions the following? Okay, just so everyone involved understands that. Okay.
And the agenda to place it on the agenda item would be on the last day on the thirteen. Further, so we can draft everything, the only thing that we need to give them is the list, because the information is provided on our website. And and staff, uh Mari Sol and Andrea can provide. All these documents to bear them. We still need to have. I think they provided us with copies, right, with hard copies.
So this can be uploaded for digestion by the city council?
By the city council.
They are gonna give him enough time to the city council.
Right.
So because if we make the decision by the thirteen. Like, I'm sorry. Then on the thirteen. On the thirteen, will they have all the information, that's on Thursday night. When when do they meet on Tuesdays?
They meet on Tuesdays, the first and the third, right?
Can we, can we make this digestible now, because we have all, we've collected all the proposals and everything. No, that's what I mean, to make sure they have everything that we have to this point. We don't have to wait until we're making, we're deciding, they can.
You're deciding, right. You're deciding, they're not deciding.
No, what I'm saying is, we're deciding based on these presentations and the proposals.
Correct.
And all this stuff is up on our website, correct?
Correct.
Alright.
Through the chair, um I say that just to so that we're on the same page, I know you mentioned. I know that you meant. I know that you mentioned. They don't want to hear me talk loud, you know that from the basketball court. Uh no, but uh through the chair, I know that you mentioned that there were. With consideration for what's happening in executive session, with what we discussed. With uh part key proposals on the food, uh is that independent of of that scenario or are we still moving forward?
No, I think, I think we we, as as our attorney said. As I said, we wouldn't have received uh approval of our minor amendment if we haven't followed that. It's common sense. What we're trying to do and what the uh mayor also wants. Is that for us not to make, you know, we we're unified, we want city. So if we have a ci- a city council that wants to have information, correct? We give him the buy-in. And let him understand that you have done your job. You were assigned with a responsibility as a redevelopment authority. You did your due diligence and now you're presenting your findings and letting him know, because you followed the public process.
Right.
Uh we were guided by a consultant. That would, you know, so people won't say that we didn't know what we were doing. I'm not saying we are as experienced as as other redevelopment authorities that have been, you know, long functioning. But I think that by deciding on a project and knowing how to justify. Is appropriate and you completed your task.
Right, and haven't had solicited excellent proposals from various developers.
Yes, but I do believe and I do think that we should listen to, you know. If they want to put certain conditions, now is the time for us to talk to them and say what else you want. I know they have discussed or some of the city councillors have mentioned, they want local participation. Um uh I heard that we need to sell the properties. Right, um at a price, we did our due de- diligence, we have an appraise, we appraised all the property. Um and there's one property that we need to send. Um for a second minor amendment, which is the one across uh Tripoli. And that would be, that will be then, then we're done, but the other projects can move forward.
Okay. It's best, this is, I think, the best. Case scenario for for all of us. As Octavian said, get everybody on the same page, let's see. So let's see how it unfolds. Okay? So our committees will meet, discuss next week and the following week we'll be making decisions. And then we'll go before the city councils with our boundaries. Next Tuesday.
Okay, Mari is not, is not here, but you, can you? That's okay, the way the show goes on.
Why don't we change the Wednesday to Tuesdays?
No, because because of uh uh just for the sake of this. And then we go back to the regular one.
Yes. I want to thank all the board. Secretary, attorney, Mr. Garris, trust me, I'm a man. Absolutely. Looking forward to work with everybody. Um calls always on, emails. Any questions, concerns, feel free to hit it. I like the, I like what we came up with. I'm I'm going with it. Yep. Yep. And his phone's always on. When he leaves, you can call him immediately. Alright, can I get a? Can I get a motion to close?
Everybody say hi.
Thank you all very much.
Hi.
Alright. Alright.